All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. Hello?
Thank you.
Okay, we're just calling the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is a special committee of the whole, part of our strategic planning process. And today, we're doing, really looking at asset management, financial planning, some of the foundational pieces. And for those in the audience, we've decided to break out some of the strategic planning in this way because there is an importance to have the same information so that all the members of council have the same information, staff and the public have a good understanding foundationally of where we're at, and then we're able to make some decisions based on that information. Now, today is not the decision-making day. Ultimately, we'd love to have this as part of our budgeting process where everything's tied magically together. We're not there yet, so what we're doing is we're bringing the financial information forward to these intermediate pieces, and then we will ultimately be going with the strategic planning, taking all these parts together and putting it into a cohesive plan to move forward. So, oh, yeah, Tarek, just, I'll ask you the question. We have Tarene, Councilor Tarene, on speakerphone. Tara, can you hear us okay?
Very well, thank you.
Excellent. Oh, and yeah, can you just mute your phone when you're not talking, just so there's no rustling in the background?
Radio.
And in the interest of getting right to it, I will, I'm just gonna hand this right off to our Director of Engineering, Dan Haran. Mr. Haran, please take it away.
Thank you, Chair. So, we will start off, kick off the presentation portion.
I should actually, sorry, I was a little too informal on this one. I really do, make sure, want to make sure we do this at every meeting, so we, I do want to also just acknowledge that this meeting is being held in the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait-Saleish peoples, specifically the Lakewangan-speaking people, known today as the Songhees and Asquamawalt First Nations, and their connections to these lands continue to this day, and that these, this is being livestreamed by video and recorded for future archives. So, if you speak, we will, you will be recorded. And also, just would like to know procedurally, we're, the goal here is to, we're gonna learn and ask questions of staff. We're gonna have a bit of a discussion at council to kind of get a sense of where people's priorities are and use that as a guidance. And then, before we wrap up the meeting, before we make any final recommendations to ourselves, and again, no decisions are being made finally here, but we'll invite the public to come forward and speak as well. So, the idea is that we'll have continuous public input at all of these meetings so that rather than leaving it to the very end of, say, estimates as the only input. So, there we go. Sorry, Mr. Haran, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. The first part of this workshop will be a presentation that Debbie Carter and I, the Director of Financial Services, and I will walk you through. The first chunk of the presentation is really around knowledge sharing, around getting us all in the room and the public listening on the same page of asset management, what it means to Oak Bay and where we are in terms of this program. The second half of the discussion is around, or of the presentation, the workshop, is around discussions and decisions. So, program oversight, talking about specific projects, timelines, resources and expectations from a high-level governance perspective, and then staff recommendations on savings plans for future infrastructure reserve. So, Asset Management B.C., a few months ago, this, this link that I've put up on the page there is really the place for anybody who's looking for anything related to asset management in Oak Bay can find it at that Asset Management Program page. That's material, references, reports, presentations, all of it. It's all there. So, I wanted to put that up first so that anyone looking at this later knows where to find that stuff. The early stages of asset management in terms of program and activities is in the late 2000s with the beginning of the capturing and reporting on tangible capital assets. But the first point that we have here is basically, in the official community plan in 2014, there is an item to develop a comprehensive asset management program. In April 2015, council gave strategic direction to staff to develop such an asset management program which kickstarted the activities in this area.
So, from there, the asset management program was initiated. The expansion of the storm sanitary sewer televising program began in July 2015 and continues today. Delivery of the municipal buildings' condition assessment and needs analysis was done in the summer of 2016, and this is known as the Morin Associates Report. Delivery of a consultant's report on an asset management plan occurred in fall 2016, and that one is known as the Opus Report. Since then, there have been staff reports prepared and council updates provided on the state of infrastructure and asset management practices in both March and November of 2017. At the February 19th, 2018 council meeting, a reserve and surplus policy was recommended and endorsed by council in order to provide guidelines and direction for the establishment and maintenance of reserves and accumulated surpluses. It was recognized at that time that the policy was a work in progress and that minimum and optimal reserve balances were still to be determined. On March 19th, 2018, there was a presentation to council by the Municipal Finance Authority, or MFA, on borrowing.
So, the next two slides are a summary of some of the key council decisions that were made. The first slide here talks about, first of all, in March 2018, an asset management policy was adopted, which is essentially capturing a leadership commitment and a mandate to adopt asset management best practices and a professional approach to sustainable service delivery. The second part is the asset management strategy, which is adopting a program management approach to delivering on asset management aims, program being made up of discrete, time-bound projects. So, I'll take this time just to pull out some of the things, the key things, out of the policy and the strategy that are important to talk about today to get us that common knowledge base. The first one is that the fundamental aim of an asset management approach is to create a planning and execution framework that delivers what we call sustainable service delivery. The definitions for sustainable service delivery and asset management itself, we've taken from Asset Management B.C., the organization that's the endorsed good way of doing best practices for municipal asset management in British Columbia. So, "Sustainable Disservice Delivery," and I'm quoting now, "ensures that community service needs and how those services are delivered in a socially, economically, and environmentally responsible manner do not compromise the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Communities build and sustain and maintain infrastructure to provide services. These services support our quality of life, protect our health and safety, and promote social, economic, and environmental well-being." So, failure to care for our infrastructure, manage our natural resources, and protect the benefits provided by nature risks degrading or even losing the services community enjoy, communities enjoy, and that future generations may rely upon. So, the idea is that sound asset management practices support sustainable delivery by considering community priorities, informed by an understanding of the trade-offs between available resources and the desired services. So, that's, when we say sustainable service delivery, it's a long definition, but there's a lot in there, and it's really important that I think that we brought that out to be clear how complex the actual definition is and the comprehensiveness of the, of the aims that we're trying to achieve with asset management in Oak Bay. So, asset management itself is a practice that is defined as an integrated process, bringing together skills, expertise, and the activities of people with information about a community's physical assets and finances so that informed decisions can be made supporting sustainable service delivery. The last couple of points I wanted to make are a couple, are some things that are in both the policy and strategy which are unique to Oak Bay. So, number one, it's, we are aiming to achieve sustainable service delivery, but we're gonna do this in a way that's likely going to require innovative, made-in-Oak Bay solutions. So, these are solutions that must leverage the lessons learned in other communities, but must also rely on continuous improvement of principles and practices using ingenuity and sound decision-making. We'll seek ways to adapt approaches used by larger, more resourced municipalities in ways that are appropriate and effective. And finally, we're going to rely on program and project management best practices to plan and deliver on these requirements, including organizational change, development of asset management plans, and the creation of decision-making tools.
So, beginning in 2017, it was recommended to council at the Estimates Committee that a 1% tax increase be appropriated or dedicated to a newly-formed infrastructure renewal reserve, specifically for dealing with asset management. Instead, council directed that the 2017 gas tax revenue be allocated to the new infrastructure reserve, and in the same year, it was decided that some capital projects would be funded from that reserve, leaving a balance remaining of approximately $650,000. In 2018, council directed that a 1% tax increase be dedicated to the infrastructure renewal reserve. In addition to that, council directed that the 2018 gas tax funds be allocated to the reserve as well. So, total funds in 2018 allocated to the infrastructure renewal reserves was $1 million, slightly more than $1,650,000, and this is something that council should be very proud of. The balance in the reserve as of the end of 2018 is slightly higher than $1,725,000.
The next group of slides are a, is our effort to bring the, bring the group up to speed on the status of the assets in Oak Bay, both in underground infrastructure and buildings and roads and so on. So, I'll go step-by-step through them. They are quite complex slides in terms of a lot of information that's there. There's no expectation that you'll be able to hoist in everything that's in the slides, but I'll try to draw your attention to the key or the salient points that I wanna focus on. So, this first one is a summary of the, the status of the sanitary sewers in Oak Bay. So, at the top, you see a table that has all the information about the assets related to sanitary sewers, so gravity mains, laterals, and manholes, and shows how much of that we have in Oak Bay, the average age, the average useful life, and some costs in terms of money. One column that talks about current replacement costs, which is, if you were to replace them all right now, how much would it cost? And then, the number at the, in the columns at the very far right, that's circled in red, is 100-year average per annum replacement cost. So, that's a number that I'll come back to in a few minutes.
Sorry, just the average condition, is that out of 10? Is that out of five? Is that, where it says, average condition, 3.75?
Through you, Chair. You have me stumped at this moment right now.
I'm sorry.
I think, he'll give me, I will remember in about 17 minutes randomly. I don't wanna give you the wrong information, so I'll have to think about that for a second. I believe it's, I don't even wanna guess right now. Yeah, it's not out of 10, but I'll come back to you in a few minutes. So, I guess the best way to, to talk about, if you wanna know the, what it all means in terms of average condition, is that pie chart in the bottom-left corner, which talks about condition, and you can see that the vast, the majority that looks about to be, oh, I wouldn't hazard a guess, let's call it 80%, is in poor, very poor condition based on age and condition, and age and material, probably. So, and then what I've added, this information comes from the Opus Report that was done, the data from 2015. But what I've added to the right there is a summary of what our budgets were from 2016 through to, to this year for sanitary sewer mains only. So, what we're trying to achieve in the sewer budget is an annual capital expenditure for mains that is similar to what's in that circled, in the circle in the chart at the top. So, in 2016, the budget was $230,000. We're aiming for $855,000. 2018, it was $383,000, and then this year, the plan is, it's $500,000. And then you see there, the five-year plan shows a gradual increase to meet that target by 2023. So, this slide is the same information but for water distribution. So, again, the chart, the table at the top that shows the various assets, what we have in Oak Bay and in terms of conditions and costs and life and summary, again, the same circle, $825,000 as a nominal target to, to start from, and a summary again of the budgets, the budget amounts of how much we did in, in water in the last few years and the five-year plan. I'll just draw your attention to, it might be a little confusing because of two things in the middle where the, the budgets for, we did a lot more work in 2017, 2018 based on the grants that we received for the Henderson Water Main Extension. So, the total amount of work was quite a busy year, but the funding was lower overall in terms of the, the water rates. This next slide, same information for storm sewers. I'll point out that the circled number at the top, the 100-year per annum replacement cost is a bit higher, $1.1 million, and then down in the bottom right, a little bit less information, but still the same type of information, 2016, 17, and 18, how much was expended in terms of sewer main capital replacement. This slide is a summary of roads. In, as many of you are aware, in 2012, the district commissioned a study that did a pavement condition assessment, which came up with a number of 1.0 to 1.2 million per year as a sustainability funding level, but there were some issues with that study. So, we did a Part II in 2013 and had revised numbers that require them to sustain the condition of the pavement in 2013 levels of 2.8 million per year. And then you see a summary of what the budget amounts were from 2015 through 2018, and, and that's where we are. The, I just added a, a bit at the end there to talk about complete streets. Complete streets means a lot of things to a lot of people, but for the District of Oak Bay, it means two things. Number one is the thought process and approach in terms of all ages, all access for streets in terms of accessibility and, and design of what streets look like when they're redone, but it also means for the District of Oak Bay that when we are aiming to redo a street or an area, we wanna make sure that if we're upgrading or rehabilitating the surface level, we wanna consider what are the impacts of what's happening underground. So, if we're gonna tear up a street to redo sewer, storm, and water, that's when we will, you know, ideally, deal with the streets and sidewalks if we can, if we can do that. That's the most efficient and cost-effective way to deal with, to deal with these types of issues. This is a table of, this is a table that summarizes some of the information that came from the Morin Associates Reports. There are many more municipal facilities or buildings in the district than are listed here, but these are six of the, kinda, the key ones, the high-profile ones that are easy, easy for people to understand how important they are and, and why they're needed. So, there's three columns with information. The first column shows the 20-year asset management cost. What that means is if those facilities were just left as they are right now, so Municipal Hall, for example, or the Fire Hall, and we, and the district was to maintain use of the, those current buildings for the next 20 years, those are the total operations and maintenance costs that would be required to keep those facilities operating for that 20-year period. The second column outlines the addition or renovation option, so modifying the, the existing structures, and the final column shows what the number would be based on the Associate's, the consultant's report to replace those facilities. I just wanna point out that I did make an error in this chart. The number for the Fire Hall and Police is not the same number. It's about, if I recall, a little bit less than that number for Police for a different facility, but the idea, rough order of magnitude of what's required for these facilities is generally correct in this.
Sorry, through you, Chair. Those numbers under new building, is that as, as of 2018 dollars or $2016 from when the report was written?
Through you, Chair, there'll be the numbers that were in the Morin Associates Report, so I believe that was delivered in 2016, so that'll either be $2015 or $2016, and we can look up exactly what it says in the report. So, this slide here, not expecting everyone to be able to read everything there, but I just wanted to highlight that this is available on the website as well, and it's a one-stop shop, one chart that contains all the information that we just covered, essentially, either through links or through summaries of timelines and activities that occurred. So, it's basically a, what has happened up till now of asset management in Oak Bay. The next few slides is, is we're gonna walk through the asset management program itself. So, what you see is a table that, that summarizes the program, it's a series of projects that will help us deliver on the asset management aims. Before I get into that a little bit, though, I would just wanna point out that the detail behind some of these projects, or the status, or the timelines, is, is kinda fleshed out even further in the asset management strategy document itself, just for the purposes of presentation. We kinda cleaned it up a little bit there. Project-wise, there's a couple things I wanted to kinda say as a background. When we consider projects, we consider them activities that have a start and an end with a specific deliverable, a specific aim, and a thing that has been done to, to move progress forward. They have a start date and end date and a specific duration. Costs of projects are done depending on the phase and the knowledge of what you know about that project. So, early on, when you're still in project definition, unsure of what it is you're trying to achieve, the costs, they're broader, and on the uncertainty in terms of plus or minus of how much it will be versus later in project approval stages, or budget approval stages, when you know better what they're gonna cost. Finally, or almost finally, these projects that are listed here are not in sequential order. This is not a Gantt chart or, or anything like that. Some of these projects are depending on each other, so some of them have to be finished before others can start. Some of them can happen at the same time and so on, so there's no, it's hard to take a, to look at this and really know where they all fit. We've done our best to add some numbers in, and we can answer those questions. And finally, resources. There's no indication in here on resources or the ask necessarily, both in terms of money, but in terms of people and in terms of consultants. That's not, it's difficult to convey that information in, in this kind of a format.
Mr. Haran, just, just for clarification, these are projects excluding the sewage separation project in the uplands, which is a multi-year project that's underway, but is, has, again, it's a more defined project outside of the scope. Is that fair?
For specifically, that's a, that's, you kinda stumped me on that one, how to answer that question best. I think to say is, you'll see later on, we have a stormwater master plan as the key activity. In this chart, there's no specific line item that says upland sewer separation, though that is definitely something that we're going to do. So, I think the best answer is, this is not a comprehensive, everything that ever's ever going to happen in Oak Bay is not necessarily in this, but for the majority of them, they're, they fall under one of these categories. I hope that answers the question at this time. If it doesn't make... Right. Right. Foundations specifically related to asset management practices is probably the best way to look at it. There's other things that are gonna happen in the district, but in this case, so for example, you won't see a Fire Hall replacement project in this group, in this group of projects. You'll see a facilities master plan, and then in that, you'll have, that's a program in itself, so it has, and then in there will be the specific projects. For stormwater, master plan, uplands detailed, uplands combined sewer separation counts as stormwater, and it would be, it would lump into that kind of planning and activity. So, this first group, Asset Management Foundations, is essentially the things that happen at the beginning to kickstart this whole program. So, as you can see, some of them, like asset management policy are already complete. Financial framework is capturing some of the activity that Debbie was talking about earlier, so briefings on debt financing and reserves policy, condition assessment program, which is kickstarted a few years ago, as we mentioned earlier, but just a highlight there that in the sewer budget this year, what we've accelerated, we're trying to accelerate how quickly we're doing sewer condition assessments, so we can do a sewer master plan a little earlier than initially planned. And then, finally, the asset management workshop, which was planned for end of 2018, but it's happening right now. This group of projects is the, is essentially what, when people talk about, I wanna see an asset management plan, this is really what they mean. This is water master plans, which is, for us, will be delivered early this year, a sewer master plan, which we're planning for the 2020 budget, is in the five-year financial plan, a stormwater master plan, which is dependent on some other things, which we can speak about later, foreshore facilities, which is one that's very important, which we need to come back as a staff to brief council on what that looks like and how to develop that, and to talk about some of the challenges that we face, specifically that there is no specific director or department within the District of Oak Bay that, that is, that logically handles facilities as an issue, both in terms of day-to-day operations and maintenance, but also in long-term asset management kind of concepts. So, that will be fleshed out and discussed at a later date in detail. Finally, you see transportation as well as natural assets master plans.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Haran, how would you, when you mentioned 2.7 natural assets master plan, how, how do you define natural assets?
So, when we put together the asset management program, we said, what are the master plans that we need? It's very easy to say, okay, we need transportation, we need water, sewer, storm, buildings. And then, we realized that there's other things, so it's not a comprehensive list, but things like Bakker Creek, where do we put that? And there's a lot of potential activity and, and effort over many years to rehabilitate Bakker Creek, to make it better, and so on. So, that's just one example. So, natural assets are things like, so parks can be, there's a whole bunch of things that could fall in there, and the whole to-be-determined aspect of this is, what will that be? We don't know yet, but we do know that we care about the natural environment, and we have to treat it like an asset, like we would anything else. So, planning, resources, and, and projects to make sure that we've achieved our aims.
Council, we're through, you got a question?
Yes, thanks, through you, Chair. So, where it says storm master plan not yet funded, if we go back to the slide that shows the pie chart, is that why there's no five-year plan attached to that? Because I was gonna go back and ask that question later on.
So, through you, Chair, that's Eagle Eye. That's, that's good. The reason why I didn't put in five-year plan in that is because the, that, the, the, what staff considers to be necessary for storm, for sewer and water master plan was approved in December. You saw that for the first time then, but then, what we would recommend for stormwater master plan, or stormwater five-year plan, you haven't seen that in terms of, so it's not been approved yet. So, I didn't wanna put aspirational things there. I wanted to put hard data that's been kind of looked at by the council and approved. Okay. There's, oh, there was one thing, I knew there was one other thing I needed to say about this slide, and it's just that, one of the things, this is just a side benefit to being organized and making progress in this area in terms of master plans, is the things that the council has already approved, that Oak Bay has already done, policies, strategies, and activities like what was happening right now, plus master planning, is critical and will be requirements for future grant applications in terms of infrastructure-related federal provincial grants. A few years ago, it was, do you have planning in progress? Now, it's starting to, to come to the state where it's, it's no longer, you need to do this later, it's starting to become, you need to have it done. So, this is great progress for Oak Bay, and this is an important thing to consider as we move forward.
So, the first item on this slide is a long-term financial plan, and I like to call it a long-term financial sustainability plan, and it's very important to us. This is different than the long-term financial plan that is prepared at the district in that it looks forward, say, 20 years instead of the typical five that we're required to provide. So, it's not something that can be prepared off the side of our desk, and nor should it. It requires more attention than that. The plan develops not only a current state report for council, but also provides a sensitivity analysis modeling tool for the organization that can be reviewed and revised annually to reflect new information for the district. So, as some of our new master plans come alive, that information can be added to the financial sustainability plan and provide some options for us there. So, development of this plan has been included in the 2019 budget that will be discussed at Estimates this spring, and I can certainly provide you more information at that time as well.
And the last group of projects fall under the category of system of record, and this is a perfect example of probably projects that people look at, and then as soon as they're done reading it, they don't, it's not very interesting, it's not very exciting, and I admit that that's true, but this is a prime example of a bunch of fundamental projects that will require time and effort that are so important and necessary for efficient and good operations and management and planning in the district, and it represents all stuff that's new, all stuff that we haven't done before or that is understood but not put into practice because... practice because it's innovative. It's things that we haven't, that it's not just something that we just decide in a month, okay, we're going to make that happen. It takes a lot of effort and time, which is over and above what Oak Bay staff, which hasn't changed in size, has done over the last 20 years. So there's, there's some, there's some tension there to make this happen. And how to get from here to there is not necessarily a straightforward answer because it's not just a matter of, let's do this and it's done. There's some serious effort and thinking about how to make this happen in an efficient way. So not terribly exciting, but fundamental and very important getting to where we need to be.
So the numbers here on this slide are not exact, but rather intended to keep it simple just for comparative purposes. Essentially, we're presenting three scenarios for consideration. The first one is the, pardon me. First one is the conservative approach, which is 1% taxes per year to the reserve. The second one is what we call a steady approach, and that's an additional 1% of taxes per year to reserve. So that would be compounded. Or number three, the progressive approach, which is an additional 2% of taxes per year to reserve, and again, compounded. It's important to note upfront, again, that these numbers are not exact, but rather intended just to simplify the example for you. If we were to take a conservative approach and set aside 1% of taxes each year, not incremental, we would set aside approximately 220,000 each year towards the infrastructure renewal reserve. That's the conservative approach. After five years, the total contribution to reserve would be 1.1 million in today's dollars. Under the steady option, if we were to set aside the same 1% of taxes, which is now the base, and increase by an additional 1% each year, our balance after five years would be 3.2 million, again, in today's dollars. And then under the progressive option, if we were to set aside 2% of additional taxes each year, our balance after five years would be 5.5 million in today's dollars. So it's important also to note that this is only the percentage of tax approach. It does not include any gas tax reserves to, sorry, transfers to reserve, which council will need to determine whether to continue or not during the estimates meetings. Staff recommendation, recommendation is that gas tax revenue contribution to the infrastructure renewal reserve continues on an annual basis. Apparently I'm still up. So to summarize, there's a large gap in our infrastructure reserves. Even these steps only represent a small portion of the larger gap presented. Staff are recommending, recommending the progressive approach to setting aside an additional 2% of taxes each year dedicated to the infrastructure renewal reserve. And as well, staff are also recommending that the annual gas tax revenues continue to be allocated to infrastructure renewal reserve as was done in 2018.
So we have spent some time doing some knowledge sharing. And the first, the question is, have we met our objectives for tonight so far? So this is the opportunity to invite questions or clarifications about the knowledge sharing portion. And then I'll be turning it back over to the chair to, with the intention that discussions and decisions around the staff recommendations for reserve, infrastructure reserve are talked about. And finally, the last two bullet points, staff is looking for some direction around whether there are any other asset management or finance related issues to raise or discuss at this opportunity. And finally, do we need another special committee in the whole to address any issues related to this before the estimates committee meetings? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. And I'm going to turn it over to the committee for a conversation. I think the, the last point is a, is one that we're going to have to come back to really at the end of the, the three of these sessions that we're holding. And if we need more information at that point to kind of guide the, the recommendation, that would be ideal. But I can say from my perspective, I'd like to get some clarification on some general guidelines of where people are feeling about the infrastructure reserve approach, the amount of money put into roads and paving system, paving management, and then some, perhaps some broader, where does this body fit, see philosophically where we want to be kind of managing our financials going forward. So that's a lot of different pieces. And I think I'll just open it up right now. Maybe we can just have a generalized discussion. I may have to sort of compartmentalize the benefits if we, if we have too much to talk about. But Councilor Braithwaite, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just really quickly through you, Chair. On the last slide where you had the chart of the conservative study and progressive option, it just showed the amount of money that we would be putting in. It didn't add in if we chose to put in the gas tax. So that gas tax would be approximately 850,000 a year. So that would be about an additional 4.25 million at the end of five years added into the total that you have in that page. Is that correct?
Yes, through the chair, that is correct.
Kelsey Green?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you both very much. And I'm going to ask you a question, which is probably a tough one to answer and I don't expect, and it's not meant to be, but if we take Oak Bay and compare it to another community, similar size, similar age, how do we stack up in terms of these areas, these two areas in terms of asset management? Clearly, the OPUS report gave us some indication that we, we have a lot of work to do, but at the moment, given the strides that have been made since 2015, 2016, both financially and in terms of asset management planning, how do you feel we, we compare with, you know, with a similar community, if that's possible?
Are you comfortable answering that? I am, yeah. I think I am because I'm not going to answer some of it. No, I'm just, I'm just, through you, Chair, I don't have, you know, the, I haven't done full-on research to be able to compare how communities are, but I can give you the general sense that I know is that there are many communities that are, so when I say communities, I'm comparing ones that have a similar size, similar tax base, similar things. There are many who are ahead of us and there are many that are right in the same, many as, I should say, many who are similar to Oak Bay, many who are ahead of the game and many that are still behind. I think the, fundamentally, what's different from what we can see is that some of the decisions that have been made in the last two years are, they don't seem, they're actually very significant. So on asset management policy with, from the previous council, and then in support of those, those policies and the way forward for this council is fundamental and very, and now puts, could put Oak Bay in a, in that category of a community that's making progress. And that's excellent. The district is in a very crucial moment in its decision-making around the future related to assets and infrastructure. And the last few years have set it up for, for some good decisions. And then there's a lot of work to be done that remains.
Thank you.
Kelsey Patterson?
Thank you. Well, try and get up close. The court is, is, is short also, so I have to get up close to it. I guess I'm sort of looking at this as more of a concept plan rather than a business plan. So a concept plan is higher level, right, than a business plan? And I'd like a little more clarity on the decision-making framework. I guess as, as I look at this, I'm, I'm not understanding, and I think Counselor Braithwaite alluded to it a little bit. I, you know, I'm kind of wanting to know where this is going to get us. So to me, it's an assessment of the conditions. And so if we do some of this, if our condition is, I'll say an F right now, if, if some of this portions of it are failing, where will this take us? Will it take us to a D, to a D minus? So, so there's that, that thought process. And you may not be far enough along in, in it yet, but certainly that would help me in decision-making. Where is it going to take us? What's the uptake going to be? Or what's the improvement to our net book value going to be? So, you know, how are we going to trend? And that's very difficult to do if you don't have your year-over-year rolling plan of this. And I don't know where, I don't know if we have years one to five done yet. But I'm sensing we don't have much beyond years one to five, and I may be wrong in that. So I'm looking for that. And we talked about the gap because these numbers are, are large, relatively speaking, I guess. But if you look at the, the total magnitude of what the requirement is, and, and looking to get to closing that gap, and I look at sustainable infrastructure funding as, as the ability to replace assets without debt. How close or far away are we from that, that gap that is there? So...
Can I, I'm going to put those two questions to staff and then we'll come back for more. I think I just don't want to have like a laundry list and then have to go through it all because that might spur some of the questions. So the first question in terms of what is the result of, of these kind of numbers that we're talking about here? And what does that actually mean? If you can answer that to the best of your ability.
Through you, Chair, I think the answer to both questions is, 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 is very similar. The answer is that a lot of the activities that are in this high-level program, things like the long-term financial sustainability plan is fundamental to us doing long-term financial, you know, revenue versus expenditures and requirements and being able to look at that and analyze what, what the future looks like. Combine that with finishing things like the water master plan, which really lays out what are the requirements, when and which, which lengths of pipe and when, and how many, and how quickly, and what is the risks around those pieces of infrastructure. That's what the water master plan delivers for us, is a, is a better sense of when we're going to, when is the best time to address those in the next 20 years, for example. Sewer, storm, water, and then roads as well helps inform that. So we're not there yet. And that's what, fundamentally, why we need to get moving on some of these projects so that we can get that information to put together a better plan. What we know is that the historical amount of capital work that we're doing related to infrastructure in the last even five years, but likely longer, is not enough to catch up. So that is why at this time, we, we, I, we don't have a specific answer of, it's going to get us to C in this time. And that's what we're driving towards in the next few years. There's uncertainty here. But what we do know and what we can recommend is that we're not, we're not doing enough. And we need to start, say, the district needs to start saving so that we can start finishing the plans that will narrow down the uncertainty and be able to give council the opportunity to assess risks and, and make decisions on, on how quickly plans need to be executed.
Can I ask a more fundamental question of that? Of those numbers being talked about for being set aside into the infrastructure reserve, are those for infrastructure or are those all to fund the planning portion of the, like I just, like are we looking at the, the projects being set up funded out of our, our annual operational kind of budget, tax-based thing? And this is on top of that? Or is this going to include that and it will draw out of this to fund those other, those other planning pieces that are so important? Or do we know?
We, we know. The recommendation, it's a bit of both. But I think it's, it's the planning activity and the cost of the planning activities is, is, is a lot less than the capital requirement for the infrastructure needs that need to be addressed. So definitely, it's about saying things that even just looking at the buildings and what the building's master plan is going to look like when that's done. The chart that I showed that had the, the costs of Fire Hall, for example, that's a significant amount of, of capital requirement in a timeframe that's not, 40 years from now will be too late. It needs to be sooner than that. So that's, that's why the, the savings just for that needs to, needs to be addressed. The same goes for things like in water. We're aiming for 800 and something as a, as a baseline capital expenditure each year, except that, that number comes from the idea that you have a consistent plan over the course of a hundred-year period. Well, we have a backlog. So there is going to be more than that required and an acceleration of capital work until some point in the future. We've met a steady state where we've caught up and, and the condition, we were able to replace infrastructure just as it's reaching its end of service life. So there's a, there's a, it's not going to be a linear increase. There's going to be a bunch of work that's going to happen over a period of time and then a steady state. But exactly how that works and how long that will be, that's the planning activity we need to do in the next, in the next while.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Chair. Our Counselor Nae.
I haven't gotten a plan for the road when we're doing this. It, it's kind of complicated in the way I'm seeing it, but maybe it's much easier for you to understand how this rolls out. But you dig up the road to get to the pipes, right? But then if we don't know if that's the road we're going to upgrade or if it needs upgrading, are we pulling a road out that we then later put back? Do you sort of see the logic of what I'm trying to understand, Mr. Haran?
Through you, Chair. Yes, I understand the, the question, I think, that you're asking.
Yeah, if you could help me understand how that works from an engineering planning perspective.
Absolutely. Through you, Chair. This is the part about municipal infrastructure renewal that is the, the most complex. This is extremely complex trying to act, it's easy to understand, very difficult to execute. So a, a good way to, to kind of illustrate exactly what you're, what you're saying, Counselor Nae, is we have, as I mentioned earlier, we've done a few years' worth of condition assessments for storm and sewer mains in the district. So the product of that, each year, we get a new list of, here's the mains that have been televised and here's the engineering work that's gone in to assess, you know, that pipe is going to last 10 more years, that pipe's going to last five more years, et cetera. So the end product, the most recent version of that is, you, you can, you can say, here's all my storm pipes, one to 100 in order, fix them in that order. Great. But we do more than that. The engineering, whether it's our consultants or ourselves, the list that we have is not just, here's all the stormwater pipes listed in order, here's all the sewer pipes listed in order. Now, those are together to rearrange because if the priority is the same, but they're in the same street, then you do those at the same time. You add water to that and then you're golden. Now you add, if you, if you know the road needs to be redone, you're going to want to, when you, when you dig up that road, you want to make sure that the, the base and all of the fundamentals around the road structure are done correctly and fully, including sidewalks, so that that whole area is good for 50 or 60 years. That's the ideal. And, and at the end, in an ideal world, we would have a water master plan, sewer, storm, and roads all done. And then, you know, perfect plan going forward, except it takes time to develop that. So at this stage of the game, we do our best to, to, to think through those things to make sure that we haven't done something that we'll have to redo a few years later. For example, when we did the, excuse me, repaving on Cadro Bay Road related to the Cadro Bay bike lanes, we did an assessment of what's happening underground to say, are we going to have to replace those pipes anytime soon? And the idea, the answer was no. So we're, that was a smart thing to do to go ahead and pave that road. And we do the same thing when we have roads that are in particularly bad shape and the, in our capital planning for the future, we haven't done this much in the past, but in the future, as we get better and better at this, our aim is to try to be efficient that way and tackle these things all at the same time.
Is that, is that sufficient, Counselor Nae? You're, you're on mute, I think. You're, you're on mute, I think.
Hello?
Counselor Nae? You, you put it to sleep, Dan.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take other questions and Tara, just jump in if you're, if you come back online.
I'd like to maybe go to a couple of new people.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I have the silent on, Mr. Mayor. I was talking to myself. Have I lost my place in the queue?
No, go ahead. I know you have to leave here in about 10 minutes, so I wanna make sure we get your questions.
Okay, um, sorry, so one other question I had is, um, and this may have already been spoken to, but it, it may have slipped past me, but in, in terms of the, um, conservative, steady, progressive way of financing, we have not, like, these are suggestions about the amount of money, but we have not yet made a decision about how, where those monies would come from. Is, is that correct? Like those could come from taxation or borrowing or, or, but, but I presume not from infrastructure grants? Cause we wouldn't have, know that. But i- is that the case? We have not yet made any decisions around where those monies would come from. We're just talking about the total amount. I, I suppose that's, uh, to Ms. Carter, I'm not...
Yeah, I'll, I'll direct that to Ms. Carter, yeah. Ms. Carter?
So that table actually assumes that that's a percentage tax increase. So there's other opportunities for funding as well, pardon me, that are not incorporated into this slide.
So that, that's a given. Okay, so, uh, and then the other question related to that, if this goes into, um, an infrastructure, uh, renewal reserve, it, does that preclude us then from applying for infrastructure grants if we have money in that reserve?
Uh, Ms. Carter?
It absolutely does not preclude us. In fact, it probably puts us in a better position going forward to apply for grants.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's, um, uh, just a, um... Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, and, and are you still planning on leaving us in about 10 minutes? Is that still your plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just let us know when you, when you sign off and we'll, we'll get any last questions you might have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
If I have any, I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
I'll go back to the council to brief wait if you want to. Counselor, uh, Appleton, do you wanna, do you have some questions? Hazel, Hazel knocks apart your, your tool, there we go.
Uh, thank you, yeah. Couple of questions through you Chair. Um, the first one pertains to, uh, contingency, uh, in the event of, uh, unpredictable failures or other, uh, other things that, that do crop up given the age of our infrastructure. So I'm just wondering whether you could sort of comment on what components of this budget gets allocated to a, uh, a contingency for quote-unquote emergency works? And is it possible that if we are faced with a significant, very expensive failure that we're talking about essentially resetting some of these budgets and some of these, some of these numbers that we're setting aside for future projects? Um, what is, what's the, the, the risk level of us losing a significant portion to that, to a significant failure?
Um, I'll leave it to Mr. Haran or Ms. Carter.
Uh, so the, the recommendations in terms of amounts and saving plan that's in front of you is, is not, uh, i- is based on, uh, you know, best recommendation of how to begin tackling this. Um, your point's a great one in that, uh, that when it comes to things like developing a master plan for water or sewer, that will be, there will be a significant amount of engineering and thought going into, um, what the expected costs will be because we have to definitely, um, assess if our operations and maintenance costs, in other words, amount of failures and how much that cost to deal with in the last 20 years is a certain amount. Um, at some point soon, um, and I don't know the answer when, those costs may start increasing dramatically. Uh, and so, and, and it's outside of, part of, um, getting the master plans done is being able to think through when those could be, measure how, how the systems have been performing. Cause even if a, a length of pipe or a group of pipes are 80 years old and should be failing, if they haven't failed and, you know, they're doing well, then we can adjust what those numbers are. So there's definitely this, uh, the master plans and the condition assessments and the future, um, what we're gonna do in terms of infrastructure is not a product that gets dropped on a table and left. It needs to be something that's adjusted every year and that information feeds into the long-term financial sustainability planning and annual budget predictions. Does that answer the questions?
Yeah, I, can I just follow up on the thought just real quickly? Cause m- my, my read of that is that we are spending a lot of money, you know, just doing that sort of maintenance break-fix type work. So, and obviously it's, it's a lot, our, our net cost is quite low when we have matching grants to help fund that. So I would think it's in our best interest to try and move those forward where possible to, to, we're, we're preventing the break-fix and, and getting to the replacement sooner rather than later given the status of most of our pipes. Is that a fair, a goal, I guess, for us as a council and, and, and staff?
Uh, that is a, a, a good goal. The best way to think of, of this issue is that, um, infrastructure work that is done according to plan is the most efficient, even if it's expensive, it's the most efficient. It is more expensive to do work when you're not planning to do it. And the reasons are, um, sometimes that work is happening after hours, um, if it's, if it's a small task. If it's a longer task, then it means it's disrupted the plan for the year. So whatever risk assessment activity, planning, capital works, um, you know, juggling in the budget, that gets derailed. So all of that is, you potentially, um, you know, you've, you've, uh, derailed your year if it, if the, if the issue is significant enough. So that you, if you can, um, have a plan, follow the plan, do the preventive maintenance or the rehabilitation according to plan before the failures occur, you end up saving a lot more than, than if you wait too long or you have to do it unexpectedly.
Counselor Appleton, you had...
Thank you Chair, uh, through you, one additional question. I just wanted to ask, uh, regarding budgeting for, I guess particularly with regards to such things as roads, um, when the budgeting and, and under, underpinned by the OPUS report, um, when they're talking about replacement costs and, and we're considering numbers for paving, uh, we're basically talking like-for-like numbers, uh, in terms of what you have as far as street infrastructure is replaced essentially with what you already had, um, notwithstanding any additional external grants that we might get for additional, uh, infrastructure or additional components of street infrastructure. We're essentially, we're getting back what is existing, but in a renewed format. So I'm thinking about things like, uh, our complete streets target and any additional infrastructure that might be needed to meet that this budget doesn't provide for that. That's, sorry, that's a question, question mark.
Uh, through you Chair, I'll just, uh, clarify that, that we're not, that, not, there's not a budget that we're talking about, but in terms of the, the numbers that you saw on the, that come from the OPUS report that talk about the different assets and the life cycles and the, the expected costs, um, your question, your, your, your statement is correct when it comes to what's in those charts. I just wanna be clear that there's no, we haven't made any budget predictions. And it's a good point because there's a, a lot of refinement and engineering and thinking that has to go into those numbers because they come from, um, rough, the rough, there's a lot of effort to come up even with those, but they're still rough order of magnitude because they, they consider, um, how many kilometers of pipe there is, how old that pipe is and doesn't factor in things like how many breaks that we have had there, doesn't factor in was the construction done if it was built in the 1940s? Was it done well or was it done poorly? So there's a lot of variance between, uh, a pipe that should last a certain amount of time. It might do well and it might not. And we're seeing both of those happening in the district. So there's a lot more, the master plans get that level of detail and give us a lot more information that we really need to, to assess what the future looks like.
Um, I'm gonna go to Counselor Zelka, but I just wanna clarify, there's, there's two primary reports. So on the, on the paving costs and the, and that refresh, that's the pavement management system report and then on all the pipes and, and pieces, then it's the OPUS report. So I just, cause it's just good to recognize that those are two different things. And, and the paving report specifically to your question was really how, that, those numbers, the 2.8 million was specifically how do we keep the roads at the 2013 condition, uh, what that cost would be? It wasn't getting it back to new, it was just essentially maintenance costs. So every year that that's, hasn't been met, they've degraded past that. Uh, Counselor Zelka?
Uh, thank you so much Chair. Um, I very much appreciate, uh, the report, this, uh, the asset management program in general is music to my ears and I, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to see it moving forward and wanna continue to support, uh, the policies that are being made and, uh, and the funding that's needed uh, to, uh, to, um, uh, see this, uh, uh, dealt with. Um, so I wanted to ask a couple of questions, uh, through you, uh, to, to staff. Um, uh, first of all, I guess one more comment. Uh, my wife reminds me, um, that, uh, people plan, but God laughs. So, uh, I, I'm sure break-fix will continue as best as we can, uh, to, to try and, 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 uh, and proceed in a, in a planned way. And yet, uh, uh, we don't know where the next break is gonna occur. If we did, I'm sure staff would be on it ahead of time. Um, so we'll, I, I, that, that, un- understood that things will, uh, get better, but not immediately. So, um, I do want us, uh, to touch on the, the dashboards comment, um, from, uh, Counselor Patterson. Uh, I wanted to ask on slide 15, there was reference to a decision-making dashboard uh, that appears to be, uh, ready or, or, or possibly, um, I will see something about it in 2019 or later. Um, uh, this report and, and the OPUS reports, you know, provided the snatch, snapshot from 2015 in terms of status and then I see some numbers that are, that are helping us with our decision-making. But I, I, I definitely take those comments to heart in terms of, um, helping us with our decision, would, would have some idea of, um, what is the status going to be and what year, depending on which, which financial model we follow through, the, uh, progressive, steady or, uh, conservative. So, um, if it's, I'll just sort of, sort of pause there for a moment. If, if, if there's, um, uh, any idea of what expectations we can have with respect to this decision-making dashboard to help us in the short and medium and long term, please.
So when the, uh, asset management program was first put together, uh, in terms of the, the strategy, the actual table that we're looking at there that has asset management dashboard a year ago, uh, the intent was to try to by this year, figure out a way, uh, to put together something that would enable council to consider the, the give and take and the, the, the challenges in terms of funding and, and so on. And that's the intent, weigh the risks and, and look at the recommendations. Um, that was, to be frank, uh, a, a bit aspirational in terms of timeline. So what's happening now in terms of sequencing is long-term financial sustainability plan is critical to being able to provide the council with better decision-making tools. And then the, um, the various discussions that have been happening around the process for how the budget's put together and how, uh, and, and the timelines for that will feed into that kind of decision-making capability as well.
If I may continue, please. Um, uh, thank you very much, the, the, that, that, that's helpful. Um, it, it seems to me that from using the word aspirational, in some ways we, we have to just assume that it's going to make things better and more money will probably make things better faster without having, uh, the hard and fast numbers. But I think, uh, that assumption's, uh, probably a good one at this point. I just wish I knew how, what, what the, what the condition was going to be. So with, with respect to that, um, is the target condition, uh, fair for most of these pipes? Is the target condition good? Uh, what is our target condition, uh, as, as delineated by, uh, the OPUS back in 2015? Very good, good, fair, poor, very poor? What's our target?
Through you Chair, that's a, that's an excellent question and it's something that, um, at least in my time in Oak Bay, we haven't been able to discuss, because we don't have enough information. But that's really a question about levels of service. Um, and, uh, and that's, and you'll see in one of the first, um, first part of the table, there is a task around levels of service and metrics for, uh, both operational and then, and capital-type works. So there is a, we have a current understanding of what our level of service is now, but it's not necessarily captured on paper, described in a way that says, uh, so many, you know, they, they always have water main breaks, for example, but what's... It took, it took a lot of restraint for me not to make a joke there. So, uh, levels of service and measuring what's, uh, what, what is a good level of service is a council decision. And we're in the process of capturing, there's a project where we capture, uh, you know, what's an acceptable amount, amount of water main breaks in a year? What is too many, what is too, you know, cause you can always, uh, you can't be perfect. So, you know, and there's sometimes the level of effort, a, a multi, uh, a huge increase in spending to try to make a, to make a little bit of effort is probably not worth it. So there is work to be done around deciding what those levels of service are. And I think that that, uh, addresses your question in terms of what is a good number of, uh, for quality of infrastructure in terms of those assessments.
Um, it certainly does and I should've asked the question a bit better with using terms like what are the best practices? Not, uh, cause of course we have to determine what the, what the Oak Bay, made an Oak Bay solution is, but with, but reflecting upon what the best practices are. So, uh, thank you for answering what my question should've been. Um, so I wanted to just touch for a moment about, uh, scheduling, I guess, to some extent. Um, uh, I, I know the, 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 the water main, uh, project obviously had to get done. We had the federal funds that had to be spent. Um, and we have this, uh, Uplands project that is, uh, I'm sure tying up lots of, uh, lots of your staff and lots, lots of time. Um, uh, and then of course we have all this planning going on. Um, uh, I'm just curious, when, when might, uh, a shovel get in the ground on one of these pipes?
Or perhaps what's the scale of the projects going forward and the perceived next, this term, say? Like what, what, uh, we obviously do projects every year. So is this an expansion of those projects coming up? Or is that just not yet to be determined?
The focus of Oak Bay's staff efforts related to infrastructure right now is about getting ahead of the game in terms of capital planning. So in the last few years, um, often the capital works planning, so water main replacement or storm main or sewer, um, wasn't necessarily designed, um, until the budget was approved, which is really not, um, best practice. So in our time, in the last, uh, two years in Oak Bay, we've really been pushing hard to try to accelerate that, which means getting farther ahead of the game for the pre-design work and then the detailed designs and be ready in place with a well-costed, shelf-ready project. So that's kind of our aim for a bunch of reasons. One, it's the best way to plan, you know, what is it gonna, what's the budget need to be next year for those projects that you have on the shelf? Number two, um, you're ready for, uh, grant applications, for example, cause a shelf-ready project is much easier to say yes to if you're a federal or provincial granting authority. Um, and, uh, and three, um, it, uh, it allows us to, to ensure that we reduce the risks in terms of uncertainties and unknowns. So this with Oak Bay, I, I've mentioned it before, um, trying to accelerate that, um, planning, capital planning work in Oak Bay is difficult because our staff has remained the same. There's a learning curve. And then there's the challenges of, uh, the Henderson Water Main Project even just by itself. Uh, it was an excellent project and a great, um, a, a, a great thing that occurred here in Oak Bay, but was very challenging in terms of resources and requirements. Um, so to try to improve our, our practices, get better at things, um, at the same time as doing something like the Henderson Water Main was, we're actually doing quite well, but we need to get better at that. So in terms of capital planning, that's our focus at this time. The second part that answers your question is the five-year plan as it shows now, the amount of capital work that's in the plan for say 2019 is achievable and doable by, just with the resources that Oak Bay has now. But shortly, the amount of capital work that will need to happen, um, within the district will be beyond the, the capability of the, of, uh, just a- as it is right now. So either we have to get efficient or find other ways to, to achieve those aims, which is still part of the learning and developing process at this stage of the game.
Last question. Um, so, uh, not to put any pressure on staff, but I'm already getting people calling me up saying, when is my road gonna get done? And unfortunately, we have to, of course, be quarterbacks and, and, and keep, uh, um, that kind of pressure off of, um, of those who need to plan and, and give us some good numbers to make some good decisions. Um, uh, is it fair to say that, you know, in a couple of years, once we have a, a, maybe a more mature dashboard, we might get to a, a place where we might be able to say, oh, your road is in the A group that might get to in five to 10 years or the B group that might get there in 10, 12 years or something, or 30 years? Uh, I, I, I don't know, I just, uh, managing expectations is hard here. Uh, I don't quite know, um, what might be possible, but it's a general question.
I think a large answer to that question is how much money do we give to do the paving? Uh, cause we're, we're quite short, uh, at this point on that. But Mr. Haran, you may have a more diplomatic answer than I did.
So, part one is saying, y- y- yes, if you have, uh, for a long period of time, uh, not a lot of road maintenance happening, you have a backlog and, and issues. And we're fortunate in the, in this part of the country, uh, that we don't have the freeze and thaw cycles. So, so the, the roads, even though they're in rough shape, seem to be, um, doing okay for now, even if they're in very poor condition. The answer to the question is, when we have a transportation master plan or whether there's a couple of sub-plans that all lump up into something that you would call a transportation master plan, but the roads plan, um, in, in districts or, or cities or communities that have these plans in place, you can look at something like a chart and it will actually say, I live on this road and in this year it's gonna get done. And then the community also gets to look and say, um, this is how much of my taxes I'm paying each year and this is how much is going to those roads. So if the council and the community wanna see something different, they can change the funding levels, change the levels of service. the funding levels, change the levels of service to achieve a different aim in terms of schedules. But at least, there's a plan to say, here you go. What we have done in, at least, I can only speak for my time, in the last couple of years, the funding for payment management has been strictly about dealing with, as best we can, the major roads, like Fort Fowl Bay, Fort, sorry, not Fort, Cadro Bay Road and Beach Drive, the major arterials. And then, we only have enough to do a portion of it in a six- or seven-year cycle, and we never able to catch up. So, and so, once we're, if the funding levels are higher, eventually, we catch up. We can start dealing with some of the smaller collector roads and so on. So, that's if you have incremental improvements. Master plan, help us figure out how to do, you know, predict when we'll be able to address those and then adjust funding accordingly.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have Counselor Green, then Counselor Patterson.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Haran, and I just, so we have a good plan here and good framework, and I really appreciate all of the information. I'm just wondering, and you've touched on it a couple of times, the whole staffing, resources area. So, all plans need to be supported by human resources. What are your challenges in that area, do you think, over the next, say, two to five years? And is there something council can do to assist that? I'm assuming that the revenue that we're looking at here for capital projects would not include human money for staffing or human resources. Would that be correct? Or consulting? It's just hard costs for capital improvements, infrastructure improvements?
The cost quoted for things like capital improvements for water main, there's the standard formula for a certain portion is design costs, a certain portion is material, a certain portion is equipment rental, and so on. So, that's where those come from. Sometimes, they can be higher because maybe a complex project requires more design work, or there's a lot of rock in the area, so blasting, that's kind of the fluctuations and so on. But I think the answer to your question through you, Chair, is about the HR and staffing is a broader question than just infrastructure and engineering. This process that we're, that the council is following around strategic priorities and how it ties into the budget in so far in the last few weeks and in the next little while. Part of that, underlying all the questions about what the council wishes to achieve is, there's an HR component and a staffing component. So, there's a team aspect of what we need to achieve there, and it's a broader question to be answered.
Thank you.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Haran has somewhat answered the questions, but this, these couple of questions that are somewhat aligned, judging by the way the plan has been developed, is, was based on what was existing on the site at the time, which makes sense. But we are going to be, not to, a few days from now, talking about a housing plan. And so, how do we deal with growth capacity in this planning is the first question, part of that question. And then, the second is about the impact of development on, on the capital improvements we want to make, because it does seem that many of the roads in Oak Bay are taking significant stress from the amount of new development going on and the, you know, the weight of equipment that's either being driven across or pulled across the roads. And so, that, I would, you know, that's got to make some of this a little more complex, too, because in trying to accommodate it all, how do, how do we, how do we plan for growth? Like, so if you have, if you have another building application that came along, say, like the Bowker, where the infrastructure is more significant than just, just a single-family dwelling, how do we, how do we manage this process and try to incorporate growth strategies? Or like, how do we, how do we mesh this whole thing together?
I'll let Mr. Haran answer that question.
So, through you, Chair, there's two, two parts to that, to answer that question. There's a narrower, you know, growth-specific-to-a-development type of answer, and then there's a broader district-wide type of answer. So, I'll start with the specific in terms of a development. So, the development process, in terms of how it impacts infrastructure, the subdivision of development bylaw, based on the Local Government Act, allows us and requires us to, as a staff, assess the impact of any development proposals in terms of the infrastructure. So, for example, if you have a single-family dwelling that's being replaced by something larger, then the calculations are, what is the increase in sewage? What is the increase in water requirements? And what is the increase in, in stormwater runoff? And also, what's the impact to, to transportation in terms of sidewalks and roads and so on? And then, the off-site servicing agreements that are done, the developer covers those costs as part of that, that particular, so that's, that's a particular development. So, that growth and the impact of a specific development growth is paid for essentially by the developer, and that's how that's done, from a site-to-site kind of way. So, then, the micro view of that question, that's the answer. The macro view, in terms of the, the big picture, there's development impact, there's impacts due to growth in terms of just things like, as more people live in, in the district, there's different, there's changes in terms of requirement, water requirements. And some of those impacts are already felt from how the system was designed in the 1940s or the 1950s, and say, how big a water pipe is versus, and how the needs are today. So, when we put together a water master plan, part of that master plan is developing a water model, which is a computer model of how the system works, so that we can sit there and say, if there's a fire in this part of town, do we have the fire, the pressures to be able to handle that? Are the pipes big enough? Do we have the right amount of pumps and so on? If there's development in this area of town, does, does this, can the system handle that? And what changes do we need to make and so on? So, the master planning for sewer, for example, incorporates the same kind of thinking and same kind of rationale. So, broader picture, the master plans incorporate growth expectations as well.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Braithwaite?
I'm going to try to wrap up all of the council questions in the next, say, five or 10 minutes, and then I'd like to kind of come up with some sort of general, general thoughts and where we want to head to, and then we'll open up to the public to come forward. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, through you, Chair. I have two questions. Number one, do we have a, can you estimate, when I look at this conservative study and progressive, it's like a one, a two, or a 3% increase in taxes? So, do we know approximately, and I'm not going to hold you to this, what a 1% sum, and we can even base it on last year's figures, what a 1% cost per household average? Is it like $40, $50 a household?
I actually do have an answer. Just really quick numbers, so they're, they're very rough. Number one, the conservative would be approximately $33, $34 per year. Number two is incremental, it goes up each year, so $33 the first year, 66 in the second, 100 in the third, and 135 in the next. Number three works out to $33 in the first year, approximately $100 in the next year, 168 in the following, and 240 in the following year after that.
Thank you. It's great to actually have those numbers because it makes a big difference to, in my head, to where I would go with my decision. My second question is, what, if we decided, if we elected not to go with an increase in taxes, or a smaller increase in taxes, and we went to borrowing the money, have we looked at what that would end up costing us in the long run?
At this time, we have not. But just to go back to your previous question as well, I lost my train of thought, sorry. We, at this time, we have not looked at the borrowing, but that is certainly one option that would be brought forward. Generally speaking, borrowing is obviously more costly to the municipality than if we save the funds in advance, so, but likely, there would be a balance of some sort.
Sorry, if I just might ask one small, but we could put the borrowing over a longer period of time.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Braithwaite. Is there any other questions? This is the terrible setup to chair a meeting, I have to say. I have to lean way forward to see people. Okay, I just have a couple of really quick, because I'm just doing the rough numbers here, and I appreciate, like, even that progressive option, I don't really like the names that much, but the, the third option there, five and a half million dollars out of, you know, running all those numbers, probably, plus the roads and the sidewalks and everything else, probably looking at half of, $500 million, so about just 1% of our overall big, big number. It's still a scary big number to be looking at in terms of that thing, so. And then, I also look at that, the 850, so we're looking there at, so, on the pipes, to maintain them or to do the replacement, I'm doing my rough numbers, maybe I'm wrong here, but, you know, they reach about $850,000. So, times two, about 2.8 million, somewhere in that range per year for the three pipes. The roads are 2.8 million, and we're looking here at, under that progressive, 2 million a year by the fifth year, and roads of $815,000. So, we're at two point, we're at exactly half of what our projected maintenance cost is with that number. So, we're still quite short of where we need to be in terms of just maintaining by our current asset management predictions. So, I guess I'm a little, I'm trying to balance this, this against the, the not being too scary a number versus, you know, realistically, we have, we have a big number, and while we don't know the projects yet, we know we have to tackle them. So, I guess I'm throwing that really more, less than staff, because frankly, it's just the numbers, but to council, like, where are we at in terms of, we have to put some money, we have to put, theoretically, we don't have to do anything, I guess, but we, by the numbers here, a fair bit more money into roads and a, and a fair bit more money into, into pipes. So, that division, I'm not even sure we have to ultimately decide it all tonight, but I think we, I think it'd be very helpful for staff to get some sense of, where is the appetite at this table for, for increases to try and tackle that? And not to hold anybody to the fire, because ultimately, we're going to be then looking at the housing plan, and then we're going to be looking at the, the, all the other infrastructure and other pieces that were in the other, in the third week to kind of bring this all together. There's a lot more to come. However, I think it's, I would like to get a sense, I think staff would appreciate, where's the appetite here from, from council? And I'll, I'll throw this out there, because I want to, I don't mind being the bad guy. I think we, we need to bump that road number up considerably, because that's really just a maintenance. It doesn't tackle. Now, that being said, I would like to have focus on the areas that we know we're not going to be doing work underneath it for the time being, recognizing a lot of them are still going to stay terrible, but there is, that is a really big gap. And, and I also say that because I also know that those costs go, the reason that we were supposed to invest in that was the, the costs escalate dramatically. As soon as they fall off that cliff and the, and the underbase is washing away, suddenly, instead of, you're doubling or tripling the cost per square meter to do that over the millon fill type approach. So, you know, it's, it's, it really feels penny-wise and pound-foolish for us to be keeping these money short. So, I would like to see us, you know, put a considerable amount more, maybe not the full 2 million more on that, but, but significantly more. And I think the progressive highest one here is almost the minimum we could reasonably look at, given the state of the, of the infrastructure that we have to do, and recognizing that we're probably not going to be really investing that until that fourth or fifth year. But, I mean, if we have one significant pipe project that's 30 or 40 million dollars, that's, that third of it is going to require an infrastructure of $10 million just to pay our, our third of that, even with grants. So, that's, those are my two things. And then, I would also like to get some, some discussion around some policies about how we can give some staff some support and direction and certainty on things. But anyway, that's, I'm throwing it out there. So, where are the counselors? Counselor Green?
I don't know if I can talk about policy tonight, but I can certainly say that I am supportive of doing the best we can and put as much money as we can away into these projects. These were huge themes during the last election, and I, the election's over, and I understand that. But infrastructure was a huge issue for the community, and, and the state of roads and sidewalks was another huge issue. So, I think we have to put as much as we can. I would, I'd be anxious to hear from the public tonight on, on how they feel, but I'm looking at the progressive side of this process, because I think we can't afford not to be progressive on, on these issues. And as, as Mr. Hen has pointed out, and Ms. Carter and others, and I saw the public works nodding their head, if we leave these projects until they're critical and, and the roads break down further and further down, then we really have some serious costly problems ahead of us. Maintenance is the best thing, and it, I'm an old boat owner, and I know that if we left projects over a number of seasons, it was a far greater cost to repair rather than maintaining every year. So, it's like, it's like having a wooden boat or a wooden submarine, Mr. Hen. You know, you've got to haul it out, you've got to haul it out every year and maintain that hull, otherwise, you know, it sinks. So, that was a bad metaphor.
Terrible.
Okay, wooden submarine, that's it then. Yellow wooden submarine. Anyway, I, I'm leaning on, on the progressive end of making recommendations, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson? I will say, the progressive sounds so much more appealing than, than expensive. Yes, I think as a...
Or tax increase.
Anyway, go with Counselor Patterson.
Yes, thank you. Kind of looking at where we, we are tonight and looking at the models, and the wording was chosen quite wisely, conservative, steady, or progressive. But, I mean, basically, we have three choices. Increase funding to sustainable levels. We don't have enough to do that. Eliminate or reduce capital services. I don't think that's an option. Sewers and roads are rather important to us. Water mains are important. And issuing debt, but we're not really quite at the point where we can really make an informed decision about that. So, you know, kind of looking at, that's where we stand. We certainly know that the progressive option, you know, it's, it seems like quite a large number, but in reality, when you look at what has to be put into just sustaining those major services, it's not a tremendously high number. It doesn't, doesn't get as, very close to sustainability, but at least, it, it starts putting away something to get started and allow the conversation to get more flushed out about all of the things that need to be done, and then to come to terms with really, how are we going to, to, to manage this going forward? But at least, at that level, we're not dropping even further behind as we have so much over the last few years. And I, I don't think we can, you know, I don't like to see us continue to go further behind because we're not just at least keeping it up to the benchmark of what we need to get done. And it would allow us to perhaps get out a little bit ahead of time, because we also should not be going out, getting bids on projects in the year that they're taking place. We should be out there a minimum of a year and hopefully, you know, three years in advance so that we can start really managing this in a, in a more proactive way and making sure that we do have continued services for the community. And, and being able to really coordinate, I think Mr. Haran has done a great job tonight at explaining the complexities of how this all has to fit together. And, you know, resources will be an issue, too, but right, from what I am seeing, I certainly would be supportive of the progressive option.
Counselor Zelka?
So, if you're doing a bit of a straw vote, I'm also leaning towards the progressive option as well. I do, I'm certainly open to changing my mind after seeing some of these plans in the years to come. I suspect that once things like climate change is factored in, and its impact on potential, potential impact on roads and infrastructure, that the, we may, we may need to ask for more from, from the taxpayers in terms of what's needed for the infrastructure, I suspect. But at the very least, to begin, definitely the progressive. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Counselor Appleton and then Braithwaite, then I'll invite the public to come up and speak.
Thank you. My comments through you, Chair. I will also sort of raise my voice in terms of support for a progressive and even a progressive plus approach to looking at infrastructure. I think we need to be very honest and very direct about what we're facing here, which is a chronically underfunded infrastructure network in the district. I think we need to be honest and direct about that. Staff will do their utmost and will work their absolute hardest to try and do the best that we can with what we've got, but we have a very significant problem on our hands, as, as the mayor has alluded to. a very significant problem on our hands as, as the mayor has alluded to. When it comes to infrastructure, my thoughts are that, um, I am to be honest, a little bit frustrated because the state of our infrastructure as it is right now poses a barrier to us being progressive with our infrastructure. So the things that we would like to achieve, um, that, uh, that we would like to work towards in terms of our complete streets plan, uh, in terms of increasing accessibility for aging residents, uh, in terms of, uh, working on sustainable transportation modes, uh, we can't even contemplate those things because we don't have the basics taken care of. So as far as we can go to address the basics and get us as close as possible to a minimum caught up and to something that we feel like we can reasonably depend on, uh, in the short term. That's what we should be shooting for.
Thank you, councillor Braithwaite.
Uh, ditto, um, and, uh, maybe a progressive plus plus. And I think that Mr. Haran, you're lucky you came to us first. Because I think everybody else is going to be going, hey, he's going to get all the money, but no, um, thank you very much, I think progressive for sure.
I don't know, the last people in front of us might get the, the sympathetic ears, like, oh wait, that's, that's a good idea, that's the last one I heard. Okay, thank you all very much for that, I really appreciate it, I, you know, I just, I think councillor Appleton really raised the point that that's near and dear to me, we, we, I find it very frustrating too, we, we, we underfund our roads. It's actually quite frightening sometimes if you're riding around at dusk or at night, unless you have a really good light on, it's not hard to fall into a pothole or, or get an edge, if you're on, on road tires, get caught with an edge in a, in a crack, that can, that can be quite dangerous. So we can't, we can't just, we just, you know, so it's actually dangerous, on the other hand, we can't do anything sort of innovative because we don't have the funds. The nice part about this, I will say, is that if we're really, if we are tackling this piece, we actually have the rare chance you can get grants for roads is if they're part of digging up the entire street and replacing things. The road replacement is actually part of that grant, so instead of paying a hundred percent of our road costs, we start getting into paying twenty or thirty percent, and that's that's a huge difference for us in terms, that, that, that'll bring that two point eight million dollars down that, in a way that we just can't do any other way, so I think those are the strengths of, of, of getting this funding to the point where we can actually cover these costs is that we start being, having some of those options of actually, now, oh, well, now we've saved that money on the paving, we can maybe actually do some, some better design work to, to make those more complete streets, so. Because it is very hard right now when we're trying to catch up. Okay, with that, I'm going to just invite anybody from the audience that wishes to come and speak, yep. I'm trying to think of who, where to go, because we, the staff may be answering some questions, so. Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect, so why don't I invite the first person come forward? Yeah, and the usual, the usual process will apply here in which we just ask people to state your name and municipality of residence as well as, uh, just write your name on the sheet so we have the correct spelling and of course, just we, you are, there's no restrictions on what you say or, or how long you speak, but of course, courtesy, try and keep it reasonably short.
Okay, well, thank you, it's a great discussion, fascinating, interesting, thanks, Mr. Haran. I have a whole page of questions, but I'm not going, I'm going to spare you and I'm not going to answer them all. When I saw the categories up there, I'm in kind of an agreement, I thought the conservative option was more adequately titled give up, steady, steady was fake it and the progressive option was the conservative option. So, uh, you know, we, we heard progressive plus and progressive plus plus and, uh, I would like to see those super aspirational things out there, um, that's, so that was one thing I noticed. Lots of other stuff here, so I think what I'll do, instead of going through it all, is I'll send you all a copy. But what I really am concerned about is how, uh, we, you are going to sell this to the community. Because we know how people like to gripe about their increase in taxes and I've talked to you before about how I'm willing to pay much more tax to have adequate service, so, uh, I'm suggesting some thought about, uh, Oak Bay New Deal type program, right? Because really, we have not done anything for quite some time, the bare minimum. But not even the bare minimum because as we know, we've, year by year, we keep getting farther behind. So, uh, like I say, I'll send you my questions in a document to all of you, but, uh, I'm, I'm really thankful that we have your progressive thinking and, uh, the, really the willingness to not just like head in the sand, oh no, everything's fine type thinking that, uh, that we may have experienced in the past because we know we have this challenge and, um, I'm glad that you're up to tackling it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Come forward, same routine. Yeah, municipality, if you just write it down as well so we have the right spelling.
Councillor, um, Appleton and Curtis and others have stolen my thunder because I was, I was going to say I'm very much in favor of the progressive plus plus. Now, in, in that, uh, context, I would like to know. I, I've gone through the material and I, I, I clicked on the, uh, the MFA's, uh, debt information and it would seem that for a percent that, that there's about a percent more or less spread between lending and borrowing. Now, uh, investment management principles would not say you borrow at two percent to lend at one. On the other hand, we've, people have mentioned that it's much more expensive to have a whole series of fixes than it is to do it, do it the right way completely and, and get it behind you. So, in that context, my thoughts would be go for the progressive plus, but on top of that, I would like to know if there's any kind of, from the, uh, accounting department, if there's any kind of a yardstick on debt equity, how much you can borrow for every dollar that we raise in taxes, how much will the municipal finance authority allow us to borrow or it, it may be much more complex than that, that there's all kinds of other, other factors that enter into this. But I would be in favor of getting ahead with it, doing it properly, trying to avoid fix after fix after fix and borrow. Uh, because, uh, that, that gets us, gets us going, so that's my, uh, point.
Thank you, and there was a, a good MFA report brought to us, um, Ms. Carter, do you have that information handy in terms of where? It won't be an exact number, but they gave us some, some guidelines as to what the borrowing options were.
Yes, through the Chair, um, through the municipal finance authority, each time we want to go forward with a request to borrow, we have to provide a, um, a borrowing, I can't remember the exact name, it's a debt servicing capacity form that has to be completed. And some revenues are eligible, uh, some are not. And it's approximately twenty-five percent of those eligible revenues, so currently, the latest one that we did here for the municipality, uh, our debt servicing, um, capacity was about nine million.
Right, Mr. Ross, can you just speak into the, turn on the speaker to the microphone?
Would that go up if we assessed ourselves more in taxes? That, that would not, would that not trigger greater borrowing capacity?
Ms. Carter?
Thank you, through the Chair, yes, actually, it would.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that nine million, do we have an, at current rates, what, nine million dollars of, of debt servicing would look like in terms of the actual borrowing volume?
Uh, through, through the Chair, no, actually, we don't at this particular time, it would depend on how much we want to borrow and there's a number of factors that will have to be considered.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Oh, you got to turn it on, you have to turn it on first, please. Mr. Mears, will you just turn on the microphone, there we go, can you repeat your name and, and municipality for the record?
Anthony Mears, South Oak Bay. Okay, first of all, I got this, uh, uh, notice at a meeting, um, I know it was announced, um, a while ago, but the actual reports and everything didn't come in till Wednesday evening, I didn't see them till, sorry, Tuesday evening, I didn't see them till Wednesday, so. I had a lot to do, but I did cancel my basket weaving class and my noon, noon, I didn't go to my noon bowling league. Just to settle you down, you can wear a wet suit if, 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 if you, which I do. So, I think we need, I'm, I'm not going to ask Mr. Haran when his reports were finished, but these are complex reports. And I notice a lot when we get these weekend, uh, you know, people that work, they get to spend their weekend looking at these reports and then coming in Monday to talk about it. Victoria gives you a week, Vancouver gives you, I think about five or six days to look at this stuff. I think we got to get better at doing that, uh, that, and that's not a hidden message. Okay, so I, I need to clear something up first and that is something, uh, Mr. Haran said about, we could get to assess new development, uh, we get to assess the roads, the stormwater runoff, et cetera, et cetera, and that's paid for by developers. My understanding is that, um, we've bumped up the amount of money that we've charged for the offsite services from the house to the main drain and that's all. Now we've, I, I, there's a lot of information on, um, if a tree, uh, fouls your drain from the, your property line to the main drain, then the resident pays for that. There's a lot of information right now, a lot of complaints on Facebook and, uh, uh, Oak Bay Local regarding, uh, the amount of money because everyone now has to pay that besides the developer. How does, how, how does a developer pay for all these impacts that Mr. Mr. Haran was talking about? Where's the extra charges?
I've just, I also want to make sure that we're focusing here on the strategic planning piece because I think the gist of your question is, is this council, uh, willing to give, to look at our policies of how we're funding our infrastructure, which is really the, the broader question.
Well, no, no, but I think he made that statement and all I need to know is how is that, how is that covering all these other costs? Different from that, you, you know, the, the actual homeowner is not going to be paying for roads and and all the other costs that a developer will be adding to, right? Let's.
So let me, let me, I'll let Mr. Haran answer the question of what our current offsite servicing costs are, and this is really specifically for subdivisions and other multifamily development, but I'll just answer the question.
I think that's a fair question.
Uh, through you, Chair, the, the bylaw that captures all those requirements is the subdivision and development bylaw. And in there, the, uh, the requirement is laid out about, so, so for any development, it's from, uh, lot line to lot line to the center line of the road. And it covers things like upgrade conditioner capacity of the sewer mains and the road. Water service and water mains as well. And storm water collection and, and distribution as well as the transportation related issues. And, uh, the, the way to think about it is, you know, for a, a smaller development, single family house, um, you know, changing to two dwellings or four, it's the same thought process as for a larger development. The, the developer needs to be able to provide access to services, municipal services at their own expense for the use of the future residents at, at that development. So the increase in.
Okay, but, but how is that covering, uh, the paving that's going on and the clear cutting that's going on? Like we, you know, we've lost a lot of trees on Fair Street, we lost a lot of trees on Bauker, we lost a lot of trees on King George Terrace. How is that covering, you, an average homeowner doesn't, isn't getting rid of any trees. Trees are national assets, I, I see that your natural asset is, is to be announced. How much of your national, uh, natural asset, uh, plan is, I, I thought that Parks and Rec were handling uh, trees and, and, and the urban forest strategy recommendations. So what part do you have in that?
In, in fairness, I think that's a, that's a to come and we have, uh, representation from Parks and Rec and most of the departments here tonight to to hear the conversation, talk with them, but we're not resolving that.
But Monday night, we were understanding that not much is happening there in, in terms of the urban forest strategy recommendation, so I wonder how that, you know, Victoria Planning and Parks and Rec handle trees. Victoria, the planning department handles, uh, the, the, um, uh, private trees on, on private property and, uh.
Is there, is there a question, there's some here?
No, no, well, the question is that I, you know, it's all right to put stuff on the board, but you have to have some detail regard, regarding, you know, are we going to have any, and when is that going to happen? I mean, it's, we're losing trees, we're, you know, we're overdeveloping our lots and, and we're, and we're going to put that on hold, I mean, I think that should come first, like, I think that was a great, uh, statement that, uh, councillor Appleton made, let's get, take care of the basics first, and I think trees are an incredible asset. I mean, they save a lot of, you know, groundwater going, you know, we have a runoff problem in Oak Bay, you may, may not know that, but I've talked to the public works people and the engineering people and they say the last time we had some serious rain, we had our manholes blowing off and all kinds of flooding going on. We haven't had it for a couple of years, but councils traditionally don't look at how much they're paving over, they don't track that. What we're tracking with trees right now, we're tracking, um, we're tracking protected trees. We're not tracking soil content, we're not tracking all the other vegetation that the urban forest strategy says is covered, you know? That's part of the urban forest, right?
I'm going to try and, just in the interest of time, you're, you're concerned?
I just think the council needs to know this stuff.
Mr. Mears, just listen to me, just so, are you, I, I get your.
You asked me why I asked the question, that's why I asked the question.
But, but the point is you're raising is that you would also like to see some priorities around those portions of the place.
That would be great, yeah, okay. I have, my next question is.
Yep, if you have to go, you have to go. We're losing councillors here, it's okay, it's not your fault.
Okay, a few years ago, the, the annual plans were talking about, uh, offsite services drawing a lot of staff away from our regular maintenance. I'm wondering if we have solved that because it doesn't seem to be in any annual plans recently. And part, and the other question about that is have we increased our public work staff that are doing this work? I know we contract some out, but, has that increased at all?
I, I think the director of engineering spoke to the fact that we largely have the same, roughly the same number of staff. But, Mr. Haran, do you want to touch on, I, maybe we can talk about this, really we're here in a planning places there, I mean, and you touched on this a little bit, wait, I'll answer the question as you see fit.
So the, the size of engineering services in general, that includes public works and the engineering team, hasn't changed in recent years. And the answer to the question, Mr. Mears, is, is very similar to a question I answered earlier in terms of we have a broader, um, question to answer around all of council's priorities and, and the HR requirements in terms to deliver those priorities and that's part of the next, as we go forward in the next little while, we wrap our heads around what those requirements are and how to deliver it.
Okay, I, I would like to see though, was to put some more money in that staffing, core staffing rather than administration staffing. That, well, I think that would be a good priority for council if, if I can make that statement, I don't know, if that's, if that's something I should be saying. And I'd like us to do a bit more tracking of how much, you know, I'd like to see that as a priority too, now. I mean, I know, you, you, you know, some of the stuff like, uh, notice for meetings doesn't have to be a priority, it can get done. I think a little faster than it's getting done. Anyway, I think that's all I got to say for now, but I didn't have a lot of time to look at this.
So thank you, and, and we are actually currently looking at, uh, if anybody else wishes to come forward, you can, I'll just make a general comment. We are looking at, at ways of, of, I guess extending that notification, it's not a simple thing, but it is being worked on, very much appreciated by staff. And, and these cases, uh, yeah, the PowerPoint does get worked on until the last minute and the important thing is we just want to make sure that people at home can can see the, the pieces as we're talking through it, because this is the first time really we're all looking at the slides. Uh, and then most of the, the, this report, in this case, I think, was, is older reports, they're not, they're from March of twenty eighteen in pieces, it's just to consolidate it, so people who want the background information have access to it, but your, your point is, is, is well known and recognized that we are doing everything we can to bring those, those forward earlier. For our sake as well.
And I realize you all just got here, but, uh, a lot of you did, so, uh, and I knew it's new council and, uh, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but I'd like, I, I didn't notice any change, I didn't notice any, I didn't want you to miss that.
Thank you, Mr. Mears.
James Sultanam, South Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Sultanam.
Thank you. First of all, the reason why I'm here today.
First of all, the reason why I'm here today is really to, to, to acknowledge staff and thank staff for this presentation, I think it's very timely. I think this is a new format, isn't it? And I appreciate, this is an update on, on a topic that, for me, it's really, really important, this has been a priority on top of housing strategy, this is my, really my priority, and I'm happy. I somehow disagree with the previous speaker, I, I think the report was very nicely written, I think the presentation is really clear, probably because I had time to, to read everything over the, I, I didn't have much to do in the last two days. Yeah, no, no, yeah, not at all. So, indeed, thank you, Mr. Haran and Ms. Carter. One thing that I wanted to say, though, is a follow-up on Counselor Green's comment on supporting staff. Counselor Zelka also mentioned about the dashboard, and you mentioned, Counselor, that it's wishful, what, what, the word you said was? Aspirational. I'm a little bit concerned, and I, I would like to ask Ms. Carter if she has all the resources necessary to, to implement from a governance point of view, and if not, please ask council to fund the admin piece.
All right, I will take that question, I don't think it's fair to ask you to completely answer that question. But I do believe that there is a couple of asks in this provisional budget coming in to, to provide some of those tools, so I think that's really what you're asking for, if she has the right tools and the staff required, and that she not be shy about asking us to support that, is that fair?
Including software.
Okay.
Let me see if there's enough, something else. Yeah, this is pretty much it, I, I, I really like the timeframe, I like everything about it, I'm really excited. My only concern is, staff needs to be supported to implement this. I see this, it's not perfect, but I'm, I am really happy that we are moving forward in terms of asset management. It is a step above conceptual, but we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanam. Does anybody, if, yeah. Mr. Ross, you're welcome to come back, and, and you don't have to write your name down a second time, you just got to come forward. No, you, you have to wait and come here and speak to the microphone.
James.
Welcome back, Mr. Ross.
Thank you. I've been watching political movements in this country for a long time, and every time a government changes, provincial, federal, municipal, there's the, it seems to be a practice that you do two things. In the first year of the mandate, you hit, hit people with the, the bad news, so that by, it's, it's, they've digested it, last thing you want to do is do it in the last year of the mandate. So, you hit them in the first year of the mandate, so I encourage you to do that. And the other thing is, you get the opportunity to blame the previous government. So, so I would say, go for it in this first year, and then keep going, people will get used to it.
You gave away our strategy, Mr. Ross, I don't know if this is, you said you gave away our strategy now, there's not, all right, so we'll come, is there anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak?
Jake Richardson, Oak Bay. I'll be very brief, I, I would like to see some detailed numbers on the idea of borrowing. I think that it makes a whole lot of sense from a couple of angles. One, it makes it an easier sell to the taxpayers, and also, it obligates successive administrations to stay with a financial plan, rather than reinventing the wheel every four years, and so on. So, if Ms. Carter can come up with what the details are on borrowing, what the impact on the cost per household, or however you want to bring that forward, compared to, and only in terms of going through the, for the whole banana, I think you have to get to square one, and that's a way to do it. And it is also passing the costs to the people who live in these dwellings as they're living in them. We, you know, we say that we're always behind the eight ball, okay, so when things start to crumble, you get into trouble, if you can, so if this sets up a pattern, that it is an ongoing expense, first the capital cost, then the maintenance of it, but amortized, that's my...
That's it, all right, thank you, that's very good. So, I, anybody else from the audience wish to speak? I don't see anybody else, so we'll bring it back to this table, we've lost two of our seven. We're, we're not making decisions tonight, but I, I think what I've heard around the table is that there is a, a desire to really, particularly on the, on the, on the core pipe replacement piece, that we're, there's a desire to fund that properly, so that we are actually, so if I'm looking at that, maybe we can bring, this is not final, so we can come back to this, but if there's a, if there's a progressive plus-plus, I see that, that, that number in the fifth year of 1.98 million, say 2 million, it's about 500,000 shy, maybe 600,000 shy of what the total replacement cost of all those three pipes is in the OPUS report. So, the 850,000 times three, about, about that number. It, it seems to me that a laudable goal for us, and a justifiable goal, would be to try and hit that number, that, say, 2.4 million by that fifth year, so maybe, you know, maybe 3%, 3%, 2%, 2% or something in that frame, so that we're at, at the total sustainable maintenance cost of, of 100-year replacement by this, by the end of this term. And obviously, that doesn't pay for that, because we have to replace them, but that would fund borrowing, if necessary, and then that would ultimately just be increased by, say, inflation or what have you over the years, if necessary. But that, to my mind, would be a, a model I would, I would think would be very, very reasonable, and, and I mean that we've actually, you know, essentially hit that goal in this term. Counselor Brithwaite?
How, just through, just a quick, quick question, how does the gas tax then come into that? Because if we put the gas tax in there, do we not get to that goal quicker?
That's an excellent question, thank you. Yes, obviously, the answer's yes. And I, maybe I can turn it over to Ms. Carter and Mr. Haran to just talk a little bit about the gas tax, because we've, for years, put it into the sewage separation projects in Uplands to provide that, that core funding, to help provide our portion of those granted projects, we hope are granted. But a lot of jurisdictions actually use it for road maintenance, and others use it for other infrastructure reserves. Is there, can you give us some sense of, of what the allowable uses are and what you've seen around the province?
Certainly, over the last few years, the province has loosened the regulations around what those funds can and cannot be used for. So, we do have some flexibility around what it can be used for, largely infrastructure-type projects. So, prior to last year, you're right, we were setting funds aside for the Upland Sewer Separation Project, and there's a separate line item in the Capital Works Reserve that identifies that amount. Beginning last year, we started putting that money aside into a, a new reserve called Infrastructure Renewal Reserve, and we've been applying interest to that as well, so, and that reserve is currently sitting with about 1.7, a little more than 1.7 million. So, those funds can be used for roads, bridges, storm sewers, all those sorts of things.
Counselor Brithwaite, any follow-up to that?
I did, and, sorry, I did, and I have forgotten what it was, so, I will, come back to me.
We have a couple more meetings, you can always bring it up at later time, anyway. Counselor Zelka, then Counselor Patterson?
Thanks so much, Chair. So, I definitely would, would love to have a bit more information, as indicated, relating to the, the funding versus the tax increase aspect, on how to fund this, and I'm, from the plus-plus aspect, I'm fine to look at a, at a slightly larger percentage increase. I, I do note that British Columbia has this wonderful ability for homeowners to defer their taxes, so, unlike other provinces. So, one of the things related to this, looking at where the money's coming from, is, is a cost of borrowing with respect to the tax increase, and whether that gets paid for, or potentially could be deferred. And I, I suspect not, but I would be interested in hearing some information about that, because that would influence my, my decision as to whether we go all with tax increase, and, and then homeowners can take care of themselves with respect to this deferral, or we go with another, another methodology. Again, thank you very much, staff, excellent report, and I'm very pleased we, we began with asset management, it made so much sense, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just, you know, Mr. Haran has had so much of the stage tonight, he's been a star performer, done well. Just one, just a couple of other thoughts that I wanted to capture along with this, because it doesn't really totally fall under his expertise, but policy recommendations that will go along with all of this, and that very much comes back to the council table. But certainly, policy around guiding capital asset management practices that are supported both by finance and operational and engineering expertise, because sooner or later, you get, you have to start tying your lifecycle costs, once you replace things and all of those, so that has to come together. A policy for debt management, because we'll have to have some discussions around that in order to consider the borrowing. And also, a policy for communications for monitoring and reporting on progress towards stated goals. And I'm thinking a plain language report, so something that the community can understand. And the reason I bring this one out is because capital projects are, they can be a little different than, than the normal operational type work that goes on in the reports that you give every quarter. It takes a, longer for the capital projects, and so sometimes it's two years, sometimes three years reporting, but just something that maybe we capture and we discuss around what we want to do with that on a go-forward basis. Thank you.
Ms. Carter, you had a comment, answer?
Thank you, just, just a comment. The long-term financial sustainability plan that was discussed this evening would provide, or would inform, a lot of the decision-making and the debt versus tax increase questions that have come up tonight.
Counselor Brithwaite?
Thank you, I remembered my question. So, if we did have all of this money, in a perfect world, to do all of this infrastructure work, and we had money to do the roads, et cetera, I just wonder what, are, are there companies out there that are available to actually do the work for us? I mean, it's one thing to have the money to do the work, but I know that with the, the boom that's going on within Victoria right now, it's often difficult to get workers to come and do that work, because I know that we don't have the staff on staff, we don't have the, the internal workforce to do the work that needs to be done, is that correct?
Mr. Haran?
Through the chair, in the long term, when the, we like the attention, at least as it is now, is we have a core staff that handles the, the group of work, but then to answer your question about the future and the resources, the way to address that is planning and getting out in front of, like, you know, the, the further we know what we're doing, that, that means our design cycle can be a few years ahead of the game, it means our request for proposals can be a few years ahead of the game, and that way, you know, the, we have commitments from, and commitments from winning bidders, but also, with enough lead time and, and contracts signed, the contractors can ramp up as well, whether they bring in resources from elsewhere, hire more people, do whatever is required, they have commitments, they have a solid, they know that, that's, that, that's income coming their way and work to be done, so they can, they can make the, the moves they need to make to make it happen.
Good, thank you. And then, I think that we should perhaps hire Mr. Curtis and Mr. Ross to become our cheerleaders, to ask the public for more money.
Counselor Appleton, do you have anything else to?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, a comment which is a, a bit of an extension on the one made by Counselor Patterson. I would like to encourage staff, in terms of all aspects of asset management, to ensure that they include budget resourcing and, and essentially a line item pertaining to communicating out to the public the good work that you're doing on behalf of the community. You've done an exceptional job tonight of taking what is a large, complicated, and pretty intractable subject and making it simple. I, I can say with a great deal, deal of confidence that the community is supportive of essentially resources going into renewal of infrastructure and renewal of assets. I know that when it comes down to engineering projects and these types of projects, it's easy to, sometimes it's easy to forget the quote-unquote outreach aspect of talking about what you're doing, I'm very, very good at costing out all the nuts and bolts and all of the, the actual hard costs of doing a project. I would encourage you to, to include, like I say, as a line item, to communicate with the public. The public wants to hear about the good work that you're doing on behalf of the community, and pipes in the ground and paving roads are not always the most fun things, but you need to be able to take credit for working hard and planning on behalf of the citizens. So, I would like to see that, that outreach component considered. And we're always appreciative of the work that staff has done, but in this particular case, I just want to reiterate how pleased and, and how confident I feel with, with staff's work. So, Mr. Ren and Ms. Carter, thank you very much for, for the work done tonight. It makes us, in terms of where I'm coming from as counselor, I feel, you know, well-grounded in information to move forward, so thank you.
Just make it sexy now. Make it pretty somehow, how do we do that? All right, so I guess that's, we're not, we don't really need any of the motions or directions, do you, do you want to see anything? I'll turn to Mr. Jones here for...
Yours, but I think we're getting a good indication of where council might want to head, and we'll include, I think, what we've heard tonight in the provisional budget, and of course, remember, everyone, that's a provisional budget, right? So, we'll come forward with some suggestions in that, and we'll provide that to you, and you can do what you need to do.
Fair enough, I guess I would, I get the last word here, I guess, the, you know, I, I look at this, and, and, and this is very, obviously near and dear to my heart, this whole notion of, of asset funding. I would love for us, I know we can't get to the 100% right away, we're not, we're a bit behind on these things. I mean, I think we should be striving to be, you know, absolutely running our business, that we are providing these services without any question and lack of clarity, it's all funded. If anybody looking 5, 10, 50, 100, 200 years down the road, we, we built into our models that we're funding, the core services that we have to fund. And I, I really appreciate, this is a really substantive first step to get to there, maybe, maybe my effort to get to 100% of funding in the first four years is maybe too much, I don't know, but I, I really, I'd also just like to express my thanks to both staff and to council, because I think these are not easy conversations to have, they're certainly not sexy, for the most part, but they are super necessary, and, and the amount of attention to detail that's gone into the, to the thoughtfulness of the comments and the questions is, is fantastic, frankly. I think it's, I've heard here that, that we would like to, we're very open to the idea of borrowing and, and sort of creative financial approaches, to how do we, how do we find ways of driving some of these costs down, and, and, you know, I think there's a lot of trust amongst this body to the staff that you have the capacity, so I just, I'm going to say that, that you do, and, and, and our expectation in return is that you, you bring forward those ideas to this body and to the public when, when we have those available to us. I do really want to reiterate, I've heard this loud and clear here, and you've talked about it, is that moving that capital plan forward so that we're approving sort of two, three years out, so that there's, when these opportunities arrive for grants or for other things, that we can jump on them and be that, that our advantages were small and nimble, we should be being small and nimble, and those, those are, so for us, if there's tools that we can provide to staff to let that happen, just let us know, I think that's important that we can be, we can, we can be very supportive if, if asked. And the last... And the last is just, the issue of, do we have the staff, all those questions have come up here a few times, not really our job as council to make that determination. However, I think this is an interesting question, because we've had, Oak Bay, if I look at the history of, you know, I'm a history nerd here, the history of Oak Bay until 1962 or so was development, we were just building out, building out this community, and then, since from 1962 to 2018, we've been largely in maintenance mode, and sort of things getting more and more worn out and break fix. You know, really logically, over the next 20 or 30 years, we're going to be back into, it's not a large new development, but redevelopment of our community, and so, you know, again, we recognize that, I think, as a body, as a political body, that that's a necessity, and so that the nature of the staffing and things are going to change. And again, just, we have to be there to support those necessary changes and recognizing that, but it shouldn't be, oh, we need somebody new this year, it should be, you know, again, the expectation is that's a plan, we have that capital plan, we have those pieces, so to bring those forward in a rational way. So I just want to thank the council and staff, again, and everybody who came up to the audience and gave their thoughtful comments for that, we have a lot more work to do, we've got the housing piece, and then we've got everything else, and then we have to get into the actual estimate, so this is a bit of a tough process this time, and we are 10 minutes over, so I don't like doing that either, but with that, I think, is there anything else? Just move adjournment?
Move adjournment.
Seconded, any other?
David, the next meeting?
Oh, next meeting is next Tuesday, the 29th, 27th?
So at 7:00?
Oh, at 7 o'clock, yeah, not 6 o'clock, it'll be at 7 o'clock on the 29th. All right, thank you very much, everybody, and I'll call the question, all those in favor of adjournment, opposed, not opposed, thank you. Thank you, guys, that was great.